One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First on the agenda, approve the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections at this time?
I'd like to touch on Old Stone Water Tower under old business.
Put that under F1. Any else, Doug?
And then, we don't have a committee position here. I just want a little update on the park.
On what's that?
On Park Board.
Park Board, in our committee report?
Yeah, we don't have a listing in the committee report.
Wonder committee report?
Noted after the new business, or?
The committee reports are E on the front page.
Oh, I missed it. Sorry about that.
E3? Any else, Doug?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Lonnie?
No.
Thank you. Dan? All right. Nothing from me. If that's the case, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda with the two changes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion with a second?
Second.
A motion with a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, both saying, all right. Onto the consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? Not to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Doug.
I'll second it.
And Lonnie, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, both saying, thank you. All right, visitors to the council, Randy Schmidt with Quanis.
Thank you for your time. I know you have a busy agenda this evening. I do have some brochures that I'll want.
I can say it. You can put that packet on the chair. Yeah, right behind you.
So, partially here just for information, but also to reach out to you and encourage you to provide some feedback. My name is Randy Schmidt. I'm lieutenant governor for Quanis in the southeastern region of Minnesota from the Twin Cities on down, and I'm an active member of a Quanis club in Rochester. Earlier in November, we had a team of Quanis national and regional leaders that visited Cass and Manorville, and we met with local community members to build a new Quanis club. And Quanis is a service organization, but what sets us apart is our focus on children from very young all the way up through young adults. And we have nearly 100 Quanis clubs across Minnesota. We don't have one between Rochester and Owatonna. We do have clubs, so we have four in Rochester, two in Owatonna, two in Austin, three in Albert Lee, one each in Stuartville, Spring Valley, and Perrville. And Quanis is particularly a great fit for a community like Cass and Manorville. We met with a wide variety of Cass and Manorville community members, including school officials, faith community leaders, public safety officials, Chamber of Commerce members, and business owners. In fact, I'll be meeting with the Chamber of Commerce in early December. The feedback has been very supportive. We're making good progress on recruiting new members and continue to engage the community to build this club. We have other Quanis members that are committed to assist the development of this club during their early phase, but each Quanis club is quite unique based on community needs and the interests of the members. And so, things have not been decided like, when is the club going to meet, how often, exactly what it's going to focus on for community service projects, yet we have a lot of options of examples from Quanis International and programs that we can leverage based on the needs here. And we've met with the school officials to try to get a better appreciation for that. So, I'm asking for your support in three items. One is, please assist with sharing this information with other community members and provide me with input on ways that we can further share this. Please also help refer me to other prospective members. And please also consider joining us as charter members for the club and to be able to influence the formation of this. As this gets established, it's going to be a great asset for the community of Cass and Manorville as you continue to grow and develop. I have a number of employees that work for me that live in Cass and Manorville area because of the great community and schools that you have here, and this would be a great benefit for my employees as well. So, with that, do you have any questions or anything I can assist with at this time?
I think so, right?
Okay. One common question that came up is, we already have a Lions Club in town, and that's a great asset for the community, but frankly, every community we're in, they have Lions Clubs, and we complement very well with the Lions Club. And so, we believe that there's plenty of space and need that, and we're looking forward to continuing to collaborate with the community that has a Lions Club.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we'll move on to public forum. We have one gentleman here, Bruce Kruger.
Yes.
Would you like to step off the podium and state your name and address, Bruce?
Yeah, thank you for your time. Name is Bruce Kruger. Address, you said?
Yeah.
603 Fourth Avenue Northwest. And I've got kind of a funny request here for you. I am looking, right now, I'm living in, we have about a two-acre lot over by the North Park. That's Doc A. Veltz's old house. And on those two acres, we've got about a third of an acre of organic gardening. And then this next coming spring, looking at, now that we can have chickens, looking at getting some chickens. But at this time, we're still, we go through six to eight eggs a day, and looking at to find some way, if we could try and find some way to increase the number of chickens per premise to more than six, you know, between, say, 12 to 15. Now, the ordinance does say no permit shall be issued for the keeping of any more than six chickens on any premises. Now, I just got done writing a $21,000 check for assessments to the street and sewer, and we all know that the streets in that area and everything in that area, and the gutter, are in really good shape. We know that it's not going to increase my property value by 21,000. Now, instead of fighting this and, you know, going the route of that, I went ahead and just paid it off, and so what I'm doing now is just requesting that, you know, somehow we could find a way to increase the number of chickens that we could add, since our lot is large enough, and that's it. And it's also surrounded by trees.
Okay.
So, for your consideration.
Yeah, I think we've kicked this down. The planning commission, have them, you know, review if there's anybody on that first.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any more I need to do at this point?
To want you to be there?
Yeah, I would say that the next month's planning commission meeting would be a good idea to have you there.
Okay, December's planning commission.
Yep.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. All right, that's it for the public's forum.
I have a question. It came up after you guys called the meeting to order. I hadn't planned initially, but I would like to ask a question of public forum.
Okay.
Was Paris 204, Fourth Avenue Northwest, Cassin? From my own education, would you guys explain to me how the agenda that is published to the public is set? How do you guys get things on the agenda, or how do you determine what is and isn't going to be on the agenda for each meeting before the meeting starts?
Well, I'd say we normally have our standard items on there, and then normally, say, Council Mayor, with the items that they want to bring up, would have them added to the agenda, and the package put together.
Okay. Why, is there, under Minnesota law or anything, something that says you need to provide due notice to your constituents rather than just amending the agenda whenever you feel like it after a meeting is called to order, so that people have due notice of what's going to be discussed?
Is that what I mean?
Yeah, you're the only other lawyer in the room that I know of. And I genuinely don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Okay. I honestly don't know off the top of my head either.
Okay.
Because if they, how much notice has to be given, I mean, it's not uncommon for people to add things to the agenda. If it's something that is a big issue, it's something that is going to be acted upon, a lot of times we would ask to kick it down to the next meeting so that it could be, you know, put on the agenda so people get notice. If it's just a discussion item, it's not something that we get too technical about.
Okay. And the reason that I asked is that this will be at least the second meeting in a row where Councilman Buck has moved to amend the agenda to add the Old Stone Water Tower, where it hasn't appeared as an agenda item published to your constituents, so that they have notice in advance that something is coming up that might impact them. And so, that's why I asked how such things are determined, because, you know, if folks know that these things are going to be on the agenda, they might show up. But if they look at the agenda and they say, nah, nothing that pertains to me, I'm going to trust my duly elected representatives to take care of my interests, I'm not going to go.
Well, if you watched the last meeting, which I took, and you did, all I did was comment, and what comment I made at the meeting before, from public forum, or from?
And I'm not trying to pick a fight, Doug. I'm simply asking how it's determined.
I'm just telling you what went on.
Sure.
And tonight, I just put it on there because we were going to get some answers on it, and I didn't see it on another part of the agenda, who I thought was going to have the answers.
Okay.
That's what I'm going to ask tonight.
And it was just a general across the board, like, what is the Minnesota statute pertaining to city council agendas for, my own education. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to public hearing. We have the Eighth Avenue Southeast Vacation.
Want me to take that one? We have prepared a, this is the vacation of the part of the road, Eighth Avenue Southeast, which would be south of our Highway 14 right-of-way and north of Seventh Street Circle. So, that part of the roadway that was vacated or hasn't been used since they put Highway 14 in, it's in pretty rough shape. It would still allow everyone access to the properties that they have, and so there is a proposed resolution in the package. We do need to have a public hearing on the vacation, so I have you open it up for public comment.
Okay.
Next.
All right, we will open the public hearing for the Eighth Avenue Southeast Vacation. Is there anybody who would like to speak? State your name and address, please.
Paul Chaplowski, 25 South Street Southeast, Dodge Center. I'm the owner of the funeral home that's going to be put up. We're on the addition out there in that, and getting to the vacation of the property is, I guess, my biggest concern. Once it's vacation, I'm liable for plowing, snow removal, and all that. I just want to make sure that's, that's fine. My intention is, is to repave that street once I get the funeral home done, and I guess I'll have to deal with planning zoning or down the road as that.
Do you permit, I mean, do you have to come through the city all that, so permit if it's outside the standard regulations, I think you'll see planning commission, but if it's just straightforward?
I would assume I own half of that road.
Or, I believe that's all we discussed.
Yeah, and the other half goes to Claris.
Claris, yeah.
So, and I'm 100% proud of that. I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Knowing what we're doing here, so.
Claris doesn't have access on that.
They don't have a driveway.
Yeah, they don't have a driveway on that. Go in on Seventh.
Probably need to something to work out with them.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I plan to pay for it, I don't have a problem. It's just, it's going to make a much nicer area for everyone over there, so.
I don't see an issue. You're happy.
If you wanted to utilize the entire roadway, you could talk to them about purchasing that sliver from them.
Okay, sure.
It might take care of any.
Issues down the road.
Okay, that's fine.
It was to my understanding you were going to have kind of a horseshoe on the west side of your building there? You're going to have two entrances or?
Actually, one entrance is to my garage, so that's just a straight shot, and that's closest to that barricade on the north side there, so. But the other horseshoe?
I was just wondering if you were planning on paving it most of the way past your property there, that, because the other driveway's hard enough down.
Oh, definitely.
Most of it's going to be paved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was just a question of mine.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Is there anybody else I would like to speak? Yes, that's, we'll close the public meeting. Is there any other, you guys got any questions, comments, concerns? Dan?
Hello? Hi.
Oh, Doug?
No, I'm good.
All right, I would entertain a motion to accept a resolution of vacating Eighth Avenue Southeast.
I'll make that motion.
A motion?
I'll second it.
And Lonnie, a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, both saying, all right. Resolution passed. Onto committee reports. First off is planning commission. You want it, Lonnie?
This for the Marty sidewalk, pit ramp request. We pretty much discussed it and have no issue with putting in the pit ramp ourselves, correct?
Yeah, basically what it is, Don has a lot on the south side of Fifth Street, where back in the days when they ordered for it, you didn't have to put sidewalks in.
Right.
So, on the north side, you have to put sidewalks in. What Don's proposing is that he would bring the sidewalk up through his property to the corner, the north-south sidewalk on the east side of the avenue there, and his request that if he does that, if the city would put in the handicapped pit ramps, is how he said that.
Yep.
So, on planning commission, now everybody kind of got a chance to look at it, and I believe it was unanimous to recommend the city put that ramp in, what Don's going to put the sidewalk in.
I thought that the way it must have been on the, on the tape, the very beginning of that didn't get said very good, on mine anyway. I couldn't get the very, I didn't know how it started out, but I knew there was no sidewalk on that other one there, so. Actually, that whole lot wasn't required for sidewalk, then, because it was plotted off of history.
Yeah, it was plotted with the big old third.
Yeah, I kind of figured it out after, but like I say, the beginning of that planning meeting, it didn't come on tape that whole, the beginning, so it kind of started in the midst of things.
So, yeah, so the consensus on the planning commission, I think it was unanimous, I think it was kind of, Lonnie was kind of, it's a no-brainer.
Yep.
So, planning commission recommended that, we'd like to see the city call and support ahead and pay for that ramp, what Don's going to put the connection into the sidewalk.
Do you know how much that's cost?
I would, depending on how it's configured, 1,500, be it probably 15,000 or maybe 2,000 if it was a bigger pit ramp. One issue, or one question I'd have maybe is, the plan to have Mr. Marty install the pit ramp and be reimbursed by the city, or is it something we'll do next year as part of our concrete project, or is the, or is the direct staff direction?
When would he put the sidewalk in?
I would guess probably late spring, early summer.
So, I think we could make it part of our concrete, or that sidewalk fund.
I just want to suggest that you maybe give him a grade on that north end of the sidewalk where he stopped, if he's there and puts a sidewalk in, or if he goes to Normal above the curb.
Yeah, still have to rip it back out.
Or two way built. Yeah, if the ramp is in there first, that'd be ideal. Just give him a grade where to stop, and then it's going to be a lot cheaper in all of it.
So, my assumption is, is that the, next year, in the next budgeting cycle, we'll have the sidewalk maintenance project, that we do these sort of pit ramps or sidewalk replacements, and we would add this pit ramp to that project and have it built next year. We just have to line up schedules. If Mr. Marty's there before we put the pit ramp in, we can coordinate with him to grade the, stamp the sidewalk.
You two just touch and get that grade in, and it'll save a couple panels when they come to make it fit.
Now, these new pit ramps, are they different code, like along 57, you know, where they're a little longer, or does it just depend on the grade?
The code is exactly the same, so that if the city's pit ramps were going to be compliant, it would look similar to what you have along 57, which may not have installed. And you may have noticed on Main Street, we did some retrofits, and they look probably similar to what 57 looks like. So, the grade, the length of what you referenced is dependent on how the grades all kind of go together, so.
Right, yep.
Very difficult to build in the field without, so.
Okay.
We definitely need to coordinate, because concrete's expensive, so.
Yeah, and the new law, every one has to be designed.
Right.
So, they need a stamp on every one of them.
Yep.
Things we can handle, put it on the list for next year.
Good with you?
Yeah. I mean, it would be, I might go get it up. Don Marty, 63797, 250th Avenue. Yeah, because it would, it just wouldn't make sense not to have a sidewalk there. It comes down from the south, and that makes really the one on my grand bigs worthless without it, so it just makes sense. So, I don't know, is this qualified as my part of the, or will I get back up again?
Just stay right there.
Okay.
I would be fine with that.
Would you be able to recoup that cost if we annexed him into the city?
You sure you want that?
He sat down already.
Okay, well, I guess I would entertain a motion on that.
I'd make that motion as long as we now we know where the money's coming to pay for it, so that was the biggest thing.
Okay, I'd be proposing the sidewalk maintenance budget, and then I assume it's going to be budgeted next year, so.
All right, we have a motion to go ahead with putting in the sidewalk maintenance budget for next year. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, both saying. All right, onto?
Thank you. Have a nice.
Thanks, Don.
A report from the planning commission, review of sale. I hope you didn't bring the golf cart today.
Nope.
Teresa, would you want to, I think you took probably more votes than I did on that.
Sure, I can do that. So, the, yeah, the planning commission did review the sale of the city property in front of ShopCo. There were two comments. One, it was that one of those lots will require a rezone, and the second was that combining the lots and potentially combining those with the additional property from the property owner slash ShopCo would require either a minor subdivision or a planned unit development. So, just those notes, but if I didn't share those with you, Melanie, right after the planning commission meeting, I'm sharing them with you now.
You did. I did. Okay.
Okay. All right, onto number three, park board update. Doug?
Well, we had a park meeting last night and went over some of fees, and Quanis Center had kind of a tough year due to weather, and the very electric meter was one of them that wasn't pegged right there. So, between, oh, $16,000 less revenue because of a cool summer, and $28,000 more in power costs, and a $41,000 loss. So, I'm kind of wondering how to make that work in the early ways. We adjusted, so fees a little bit, none to residents, a little bit for out-of-town season passes and stuff, you know, and little things like that, but tried to keep everything pretty much the same on fees because they feel they're regular ballplayers to everyone else. So, that's been what I had to report.
All right, do we have any for Doug?
No.
Oh, and one other thing that Ronnie touched on, and it's, we got to the Dodge County Ice Arena, and is there, do we have a board that's managed in that?
Yeah, there's an Ice Arena Committee. The next time this meeting is November 30th at 4:00 PM here at City Hall, and I did see that the county clerk had included that notice on her agenda of the next county board meeting.
Okay, I'd like to ask that the council maybe get some report on some of this, too, because they have a lot of questions on some things there, so.
Yeah, Holly sent me an invite on those, so I'll be going to this meeting.
Okay. It's just, it's always been part of that park, and Ronnie got this thing, I don't really know nothing about what goes on there, so I thought, well, I'm there on the council, I don't hear much about it either, other than when they put a humidifier in and stuff like that, so. We may be getting aloof a little more here, too, and.
All right, old business. Doug, you're up again. Old Stone Water Tower.
Okay, I brought that up. Teresa, last meeting you were going to, Lonnie asked you to get some numbers together on that. Did you do so, or?
Yes, I sent Don and Lonnie.
Oh, yep.
I was just curious what it cost the city out of pocket.
Do we have a number?
77,000?
I, I.
With the city contribution, yep.
Right.
Well, it was 75,000 for the original restoration and 22,000 since then.
Right.
I knew it was just 70, but I didn't know if there was more than that.
Can the rest of us get that as a breakdown so we can see what that is also?
Oh, sure, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I just understood that Lonnie had asked me for it.
I was just curious.
I just thought it was a council question.
Yeah, I did, too. I was kind of expecting to say it to myself, so.
Yep.
Yeah, if I could break down that, too. Thank you.
All right, is that it, Doug?
Yep.
Okay, on the new business. The League of Minnesota Cities Right-of-Way Management for Small Wireless.
This is an ordinance recommendation that came from the League of Minnesota Cities after the last legislative session. Actually, during the last legislative session, there was a lot of talk about small cell access to right-of-ways. In the end, no legislation was enacted. Well, no, that's not true. Whatever legislation was enacted did provide cities with an opportunity to put something in place before the end of the year that would give the city control over its own public right-of-way. Otherwise, then, folks who would have an interest in putting up a structure in the right-of-way would not be subject to any restrictions at all. So, this ordinance is modeled after what came out of the League of Minnesota Cities as far as an opportunity to put some restrictions on use of your public right-of-way within the city.
Can I just?
Yeah.
I'm sure this is the small cell wireless Wi-Fi's. They're going up in Mankato, St. Cloud, most college towns, they're on street corners, whatever, and if you're a subscriber, you can get onto this Wi-Fi system.
And most, so, this is not saying that the city would have any control over what happens on Manorville Avenue, since that is not city right-of-way.
Right.
This would be specifically city right-of-way.
It allows the city to have, to require them to ask for permits before they can just put their, you know, towers in, and allow the city to have some control over when, where, what, who, who's going to replace? where, what, who, who's gonna replace any damage caused when they're installing, things like that.
Because Mankato shot themselves in the foot. They allowed Verizon, Verizon did go to them and say, hey, we wanna put up these things. But the city did restrict where they were gonna be. So Verizon's been able to just stamp them wherever they want to.
And I suppose with this, we can control size and...
The sizes are all the same. They're, it's just the quantities and where they're located.
I can tell you that in Lanesboro, actually, they specifically worked within the historic district so that they have gone something to kind of disguise them as much as possible so that they...
Is that a centic?
No, that was Verizon.
Oh, it was Verizon?
Yeah, it was Verizon, yeah. So, so if they know that there are restrictions or zoning restrictions to work with, then they will do it.
Yep.
It's a good thing, otherwise you're gonna have people just doing what they want. At least they can come.
Follow guidelines, yes. Yep. Think it's a good idea.
So this ordinance is just basically, I see it's just the League of Minnesota Cities?
No, the ordinance is the public right-of-way, it's a public right-of-way ordinance.
It, it was modeled after...
After the League of Minnesota Cities, yeah.
Which one am I, which one is that? I gotta, because I'm, the one I'm looking at has League of Minnesota Cities.
You would look at, let's see.
That's the one that's customized to fit into Cassin's ordinance.
That starts Title V, Public Works Chapter Fifty-Five, Public Rights of Way.
So the one that says League of Minnesota Cities model ordinance, like the bottom, short form right-of-way regulation?
Yep, yep.
So this is just basically out of League of Minnesota Cities?
This is the model from them.
Is this what we're adopting or?
Yeah, because it has been adopted for us.
Okay.
That would be our title number, our chapter number.
Do we have any questions?
Nope, I'm good, I guess.
So I would entertain a motion to accept the res- is it a resolution or are we just...
They're adopting the ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. All right, we have a motion to approve the summary publication.
Yep, so there's also a shorter version republished in the newspaper.
Any questions?
No.
I'd entertain a motion to accept the summary publication.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. All right. On to safe routes to school.
Yeah, so we started this, when did we start? Were you in there in the beginning day?
Yeah.
Or was that quite some time ago? The last meeting we had had was to review the draft plan. And then we kind of just waited. Where's the final plan? Well, it turned out the final plan didn't get to send to everyone. But when Nancy said to me, do you have the final plan? I'm like, no, we haven't seen the final plan. Well, the final plan was, it looked like maybe only forwarded to the school and not to the other participating entities. So we've got the final plan and now it's gone to Planning Commission. And Planning Commission did recommend it for, for the city council to adopt the safe routes to school plan.
Okay, anybody have any questions on it, comments, concerns?
I guess we all want the kids to be safe on the street. They're just part of it that I don't agree with. And that's when we start cutting the curbs and narrowing up the curves and stuff like that. I mean, as a maintenance standpoint, I mean, from chipping or paving the street, plowing the snow, you're plowing the snow down the street and you're watching, you're trying to get that snow up on the windrow. Every time there's a curve cut out like that, you come to it, you slow, you end up with way more snow to move for the people that are taking care of the sidewalks too. And without sand, when you get a good snow and drifting, you hit the curves and you break stuff. We've got nice wide streets. I don't wanna see curb cuts, a curb coming out into the street. Wouldn't do whatever we want with flashing lights or striping, but the chokers, not in favor of.
You, the only way you're gonna protect the kid at those crosswalks is to put those in there. That was talked through with engineers, through with everybody. That was the whole purpose of those, was to protect the kids. You gotta slow people down. That's what they're to do, is to widen it out, slow them down, get the kids across safe. If you don't put them in, you start getting kids across there. How many kids are you gonna have, are gonna get hurt? We can afford extra manpower to clean those before you can afford an injured student. That's what, you need them. It's, you need them.
I work around the stuff every day. You're not gonna give me to say we need them.
We need them. Our kids are our future. Safety is the number one thing.
Yep, and with flashing lights and...
Flashing lights don't work. They proved it. That's why they started going with them.
I've seen people go through the stoplight when it's red. Flashing lights don't even shut.
Yeah, but a curb isn't gonna make any difference.
If they run over the curb, it will.
Go up, go up and down the, the old lungways in Rochester where they narrowed them up and put all them islands. And your dodging cars, I think they made that more dangerous.
Yeah, no, I've seen these curves like this up in the cities up there. These don't slow anything down. It just comes down to responsible drivers. I mean, if you're not a responsible driver, nothing's gonna stop you unless you put a cement wall across it. And you come down to idiots and idiots. So, you're not gonna stop for a flashlight, you're not gonna stop because the curb bumps out in front of you. So...
Give the kid a chance to crawl, look out and see what's coming.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at the pictures on here. The one that I'm, I'm on the one out by the high school quite often. And if you have, unless you're just one or two students, when they're crossing over there, you got thirty, forty, fifty, sixty students walking down the sidewalk. They must know. I mean, I know, I'm already on the brakes when I come around the corner. So... Did this go by our city staff up there to see what their thoughts are on this?
City engineer was involved, Charlie was involved. They've all put their input in.
Well, this is a cut and stone. I mean, this is just a guidance that people drafted to suggest recommendations.
Yeah, I would agree quite, if I could, and as I agree with your last statement there. Obviously, we got some strong opinions on both sides of the, of the discussion. It is a discussion. There's definitely maintenance concerns. I feel there is some advantages to doing some of these bump outs. It can increase safety there. But with that said, you're exactly right, Mr. Borgstrom, is that these are recommendations, these are potential solutions slash recommendations from a plan. So what this plan is, is it's showing kind of issues within the ability for the school in the city to provide a safe routes for the, for the students. So what are those issues? Here they are on a map. Here's some recommended solutions. We need to, this plan just points them out and provides recommended solutions. It's nothing, like you said, cut and stone. It's not gonna provide anything in the ground. The next conversation we'll have, probably right after this resolution, we'll start that process. So we may talk about that in the next stage, review my recommendation. But this is just a plan. Points out the issues and what the potential solutions are. And obviously, it's gonna take some more discussion here to actually get something built and make those improvements.
It's a template.
Well, that's just what I'm saying. It's just, it's just, it's no different than a comp plan. It's just a recommendation of how people want to see to move forward. Even though we have, if Dan wants them, and Doug wants them, it's just a discussion for later on down the road if we wanna go, that we might not be sitting here at the time anyways. So it's just, just like, like I said, it's a template.
I'm not saying that we don't need a plan, but I'm just not in favor of the curb.
No, like, I...
You know, I just wanted to bring that up because they have plenty of it in here.
I, I see Dan's side of it and...
I do, I do too.
And what I've seen, I've seen these in, in bigger towns and wherever else. When there's no children standing on the curbs, that these things, either going just as fast, if not faster speed limit, I mean, they don't slow you down because they're sticking out. If you're an idiot, you're an idiot.
I'm looking at it a different way because I've dealt with a bunch of this already on the maintenance end of it. And it's a pain.
I just like that if the car's a parked there, this gives them a chance to get out look. It'll give you that with the round corner, you have kids are gonna be in the middle of the road before they see the car coming in. Car don't see them.
Yeah, I, I agree too. I mean, that's, I mean, my wife got hit on Main Street Manor. I mean, I understand. I mean, I do. So, I mean, it's just, I understand what Doug's saying. I agree with him too. And so I'm just, I was trying to say, you know, it's a template that we need to, you know, I, I'm fine with it, I guess, is what I'm saying.
We need something to move forward with, but it's, it's, every situation is gonna be different. And we'll have to choose those situations when we get to them.
Right. And so we might not be...
Yeah, and I'd like to see some bolt-on delineators to put in a few of those spots that you can remove in the fall and then see if it's working during the summer, you know. Before you have all that to work around all the time.
Yep.
But I got my word in there.
I think you do, I'd have something to say about it.
Any other comments, questions, concerns, issues we'd like to bring up at the time? Otherwise, if not, entertain a motion to adopt safe routes to school plan.
I'd make that motion. I'll second that.
You have a motion, second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. All right. Resolution authorizing TAP grant application.
Am I with you, Brandon?
No, sure. So what the council just, we just talked about, what the council just approved was the plan. And exactly that, it's a plan. So now that we have a plan in place, the question is, are we interested in building some of these facilities that are in the plan? So with that said, the resolution is to solicit a TAP grant for a safe routes to school program, project, again, building some of these things in here. So what the city of, I'm sorry, what the school, District Castle Schoolers, has submitted a letter of intent for this project. We've met with the school, myself, Teresa, Charlie, I met with the school and we said, all right, if we're gonna go with this TAP grant, which is due January twelfth, to be submitted to MINDOT for MINDOT funds, we need to get the application together. So that's what the resolution today is. So what we currently pencil out for the application is about a three hundred thousand dollar grant from the TAP grant. There is some cost participation, some engineering that is not eligible. We're calling that right now a local contribution of one hundred and seventy-five thousand. So if we submit this grant and were awarded the grant, it would be, again, three hundred thousand of the grant, of one hundred and seventy-five thousand of local funds. It can come from either the KM School District or the City of Cassin. And that's if we are awarded the funds. You know, with that said, it would be a 2022 project, because these are federal, federal dollars. So it's gonna be a ways out to where actually building something. So the resolution tonight, before the council, is the question of, is the council interested in going for this grant, providing the local contribution at the time that the grant could potentially be awarded. And if you are, the, the direction would be for myself and staff to work out the scope of the project. And obviously, as we just saw, we have some varying opinions on what actually should be built. So then my next question would be, if we do move forward, how do we move it forward? So we don't spend a lot of engineering time on coming up with potential solutions that the council may not like. So happy to answer any questions you may have there.
Do you, you're saying this is MINDOT funds?
Correct.
So is MINDOT funds gonna be on fifty-seven then?
No, that's a separate project, the fifty-seven project. Those funds are pretty much secured at this point for the fifty-seven improvements. This, this project can be pretty much a neat mention, the safe routes to school program that you've already just previously approved. So with that said, staff had looked at it. We looked at a couple of projects, kind of the bump outs talking about on Sixteenth and Fifth Avenue, and then some other trail connections, potentially Sixteenth Street going to the west over the dump road, making that trail connection. And then kind of a trail behind the elementary school, tying into the New Houston subdivision, that developers provided a trail for that project. And then also northeast kind of side of the fairgrounds, south of the elementary school is kind of a goal path in there, potentially providing a trail through there and some, some intersection improvements. So again, if we move this forward, there's gonna be some, needs to be some, some discussion on what we actually propose to build.
Okay, first question. What did the school say about kicking in funds?
They were interested in matching the city funds fifty-fifty for the local contribution, but I don't think that's been taken to the school board. So that would be something that the council would have to provide staff, specifically Teresa, direction on how to approach KM School Board with the local contribution, something the school board and the city will have to work out.
If they're contributing money, are they gonna want part of the decision-making of what's gonna happen? Or...
I believe so. I don't know. I would think they wanna sit at the table. And again, we've already had the preliminary talks and said these are the project we're interested in. We would contribute money if they're in the project. Just the city already moved forward and that's why we're here tonight, to see if you're to move forward or not.
Dollar-wise, if you take the bump outs, cost compared to the trails, I'm, I'm getting to something, but I'm just kinda asking.
What's the question? Percentage?
Yeah, if you were talking percentages. Rough guess, I'm not holding you to it.
Twenty-five percent probably would be the bump outs compared to the trails.
Twenty-five percent. So seventy-five percent would be the trails.
Well, the schools are the ones that are gonna deal with most of that snow on them.
Right.
On both sides. Sixteenth, I mean, most of that belongs to their building, wherever they're at, what area they do.
They're gonna be in the street. So yeah, you're gonna have difficulty plowing it to, if there was a bump out there. And if this, I think that area is, I mean, the sidewalk itself and the trails are maintained by the school district is my understanding. So...
Not all of them.
At least in front of the school, I believe.
Maybe in front of the school, but I don't...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so. And again, we, where we got to this point is, big picture scoping, three hundred thousand of MINDOT funds, one hundred and seventy-five of local, potentially a fifty-fifty match. Generally, these, the projects I just described, we haven't scoped to sell. That's where we need to. If you guys are interested, the council is moving it forward. Talk to the school, work out the contribution, work out the scope of the project. Come back in in January to the next council meeting for formal approval of submitting of the application, and then submitting it to MINDOT in January twelfth. And again, it won't be a project till 2022, since it's a federal project. So they have to get in this program to administer...
How is it, okay, being this is federal, well, how is this gonna go on that other project that you want us to adopt?
The ADA transition plan? I'm not sure, but I think we could work through that. I'm not sure if the FHWA Federal Highway Administration, that would start restricting federal funds, looks at this program or not. I think we can work through it. I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that should be a hurdle up this project. That project's pretty minor compared to these potential grant funds. I think we can get through that.
Okay, so can we at least take it to the distance of getting with the city or with the school and figuring out what all wants to be done? I mean, if the school wants to do the whole works or...
The school wants to do the project I just described.
Yep.
Sixteenth Street Trail, back at Trail for Elementary School, down to Houston subdivision. Improvements of Sixteenth Street, Fifth Avenue bump outs, potentially bump outs across from the football field, and then some improvements out in the northeast part of the fairgrounds and the southeast corner of the middle school. Just generally, we talked about, I could put some pen and paper and come up with, you know, four hundred thousand in balance, balance what we do in the scope of the project.
No.
And the city may have some opinions on if that's where they wanna invest their, their dollars. But I think that at the end of the day, the school is ready to make a significant investment if a lot of the work is around the school. And they're ready to move it forward, so.
Our Manorville Avenue project will, with that project, something will be done with that crossing at seven or eight.
Seven, potentially.
I mean, that's what, that'd be the only reason the school is interested in doing that right, right now, too. I mean, that's what, that'd be the only reason the school isn't interested in doing that right, right now, too.
Yep, so we took that, that was a high priority project as part of the Safe for Els's School Plan. We took that off the discussion of the separate project, because we knew that we'd be tackling that intersection with the fifty-seven project in twenty twenty-one.
That's probably the heaviest, one of the heaviest crossings.
Yep, and then we also talked about Eleventh Street, which is the very north end of the fairgrounds. It's been the north end of our fifty-seven, uh, project, which is in the Safe for Els's School, um, plan here, how to get across fifty-seven and Eleventh Street. It's difficult there, too. Uh, but that, only that'll be part of what we have in front of us right now.
Well, do we wanna act on it, or do we wanna have the whole team here and, and see if you've got other ideas for it? Chris?
When is your timeline for this?
It's middle of January twelfth. We gotta have the application together, which means we gotta have, um, engineering cost estimates for each and every one of these, uh, items. We gotta have a resolution for final approval back to the council to, to bless the, uh, engineering cost and the final projects that are proposed. Along with the school board, I have to have a similar resolution.
I didn't hear engineering costs, you know, per preliminary model.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, he didn't say that.
Worth the figure.
There's no work in that, I would-
No, there is.
Well, that's why, that's why we have it be, well, if we don't- Tonight to see if you guys wanna move forward with this, if this is something the council wants to invest.
If we don't get the grant, then we're not moving our one hundred and seventy-five thousand forward either.
And if we, all we're doing is applying for it right now, I mean, we can change the scope of it come twenty twenty-two, when you do it or not.
Yeah, it gets a little hairy at that point, because, um, this application, the scope of the project's gonna be voted on, uh, with other projects. And it's gonna be voted on based on the, um, benefits to MINDOT and how, how good the project is. So they wanna have the scope kinda hashed out here as we make the application, so.
So how much is it gonna cost us on your end of it? If it's, uh, once we get it all said and done and the grant doesn't go through, what are we gonna have stuck into it?
I think one, five to seven thousand.
Can, if we put it forward, so, say, tonight, if we put it forward, we can still discuss, obviously, before you get the application done, you know, at the next meeting, if there's more numbers, because then you'll start putting numbers together, if what goes in and what doesn't go in.
Yeah, we definitely could. Um, I wanna be the most efficient, uh, sixteen Street going east, for example, that was pretty simple. I came up with numbers, you said, yeah, it looks good, we're paving streets pretty straightforward. We obviously have some talking points on, on this plan, so that would be my secondary question. If the council moves forward, is how do we get to the, the end game of, uh, everybody happy with an application? Not only you guys, but the school district also.
Sure would be nice to have us and the school district together on this thing and approving it.
I mean, having a joint-
You have meetings.
Meeting of the school board and the city council.
Call us a meeting for that?
I can get ahold of Mark and Tuskuska. Can we tell us when they were meeting?
The, the others, maybe the direction you wanna go, I'm not sure that the school board has as much interest in plowing the street and bump outs, bump outs as the city.
I get that.
Uh, so I don't wanna speak for Mr. Tuskuska or the school board, but if we, I think if we hashed out our differences on what we build and come up with the consensus in a timely manner, we can present that back to the school board for maybe their blessing or concurrence. Um, might be the most efficient way to get there, as opposed to having a, a joint meeting. Um, you, you also could provide, um, staff direction to present something back to the council, but with maybe not a consensus right out of the gate. I'm a little leery on that and spending a lot of additional time on my end, engineer something, come out of the preliminary aspect that I'm back to drawing board. No, we're not gonna put any bump outs in, period. I, I just want clear direction. I don't know if we have that, I guess, uh, I respect the time and money in getting something together, so. So I, I think if we hashed it out, I, I think you got it back to school, I think maybe the best way to approach, that would be my recommendation.
So I guess we need to go to staff and see what their recommendation is, Charlie, and because of the doing, see, see where their say is on it, what their input is. We don't know what their input is for sure.
I, I would disagree with that. I think if you were to tell me what would staff recommendation be, it would be ultimately bump outs at Sixteenth Street and Fifth, including the Public Works Directors.
Is another one's doing the, most of the work if it's an extra work? I mean, if it's-
No, I think the actual work, the ones taking care of the sidewalk are gonna be doing it.
It's still the Public Works Department, so they're under the Public Works Director. I mean, he, he doesn't just do a decision on his own, he asks his employees what they want, what they do.
Well, if, Charlie doesn't have an issue with it, I don't have an issue with it.
No, he, he, we had this exact same conversation. Difficult to maintain, but need to provide some safety factor for the kids.
I'm a go. But my biggest concern is the school saying that they wanna do fifty-fifty. As long as that's part of this program, I'm fine.
So I think the direction would be, uh, if we approve this resolution, it'll be maybe contingent on moving forward with the engineering. If the school is agreeable to fifty-fifty, you know, on the beginning, we'll work out the scope and maybe even provide your direction here, city administrator, that way.
Right, I, I can contact Mark and let him know you're looking for assurance that the school board is willing to-
Like a written-
Right, a resolution.
And it, it would come to a head once we make the actual schedule, once we were doing, you know, pen and paper and have the engineering costs and sculpting the project together, the application together, but.
Okay.
We can provide alternatives, too, uh, for bump outs at Fifth Avenue and Sixteenth Street, uh, provide some different alternatives and some costs. I just don't wanna be reinventing the wheel every time with different. So either provide staff direction to cope with something, um, or we need to have a council workshop or something to, to get some clear direction on what we're doing in there, so.
Okay.
Well, Doug, what do you think?
I said my piece. Our, you know, I also dragged, uh, somebody from the council here to sit in on a staff meeting, too, and speak for the council and the direction, too. And we're happy to get to the end game as most efficient as possible is what I'm looking to do, so. I'm happy to sell on Mr. Buck, Rigler, or whoever to get to that point, so.
Well, I think Doug's biggest concern was the bump outs and cleaning, though. And if Charlie hasn't got an issue with it, the school doesn't have an issue with it, it's a non-issue.
Charlie's got an issue with it, he knows there's a maintenance cost.
Oh, I know, true.
He's not writing off what, what Doug's point.
But he's, he's approving it, you're saying.
Luckily, because he sees the benefit on the other side of making that intersection safer, so. So with any discussion, I mean, there's advantages, disadvantages, so it's-
Well, yeah, everything has its pros and its cons, I agree. I'm just looking at the ultimate and goal. I'll make a motion that we go forward with the transportation, the TAP.
Grant application?
Yes.
You got a motion to move forward with the, uh, authorizing the grant for the TAP? Uh, just don't want-
I know.
Resolution authorizing TAP grant application. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Don, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to be clear, that was two to two?
Yep.
Yep.
So this will have to be table until next meeting? And it's two to two?
It, it, it failed.
Yeah.
It just failed. It doesn't mean necessarily that it'll come back.
Well, I, I would recognize, I'd like to put that kind of next meeting. Form further discussion when all councils are there.
All right, uh, what do we got on the next one here?
This is, um, a resolution authorizing solicitation of funds. So we kinda ran around a little bit trying to figure out how the police department could raise funds for their shop with the cops, thinking that, well, that's not a city function, that wouldn't be, um, the use of public funds. How would we acknowledge the donation? So it turns out, in the last legislative session, actually, there was authorization for the, um, National Night Out and other activities that promote positive police community interaction. So we can actually, um, pass a resolution authorizing solicitation of funds. Or, um, they will be used for shop with the cops, but it's open-ended, too. It could, in the future, be National Night Out or other initiatives of the police department. Um, another reason to do this is that they have set up a GoFundMe page. And this would allow them to have a separate checking account, so we wouldn't be exposing our city checking, essentially, um, to potential hacking or fraud or, or, uh, any activity like that. So this resolution does two things. It, um, acknowledges that we can solicit funds for that purpose. It authorizes solicition, solicitation of funds for that purpose. And then specifies that there will be a separate checking account and how that will be handled.
So this is just safeguarding our account? It's allowing them to solicit funds, but it's also safeguarding our own account?
Yes.
And also eliminating any additional administrative steps required in figuring out what city funds, what was, you know, so staff time to-
Make it on its own. Okay, I make a motion authorizing solicitation of funds and creating a separate checking account to cover those funds.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion second, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? All right, sounds good. Resolution of local decision-making authority.
So, um, this is really just to show solidarity with other cities in Minnesota. On the last legislative session, it includes several items that, um, would have limited, um, cities and township ability to regulate. So any, uh, number of items that they might wanna regulate themselves. I know things that were in the news were minimum wage. Um, we had this whole small cell discussion. What else was kinda out there last session? So this is just cities taking, taking a stand together, providing these resolutions to the Senate and the House at the state level and saying, we don't need, you need to legislate what you legislate and let the cities govern themselves. So it, it's totally up to you. If it's the stuff that you wanna take, um, we'll pass it on to the League of Minnesota Cities when they're lobbying on our behalf. At the state houses, they'll have this with them. If not, there are lots of other cities who have passed the resolution. Um, and they have, of course, at the League of Minnesota Cities will all, always lobby on behalf of cities, so. Totally up to you.
Any other questions, or what do you guys think?
I don't think it's in our best interest that we can govern ourselves.
No, I agree. Makes sense to me.
Yeah, Doug, it just-
Lonnie?
No.
Doug?
I'm good with it.
That's good.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, accept the resolution for local decision-making authority.
I'll make that motion.
Second, motion second, all in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? All right, thank you. Uh, no mayor's report? Administrator's report?
Um, yeah, and so we did budget to participate in the housing study with the county. Unfortunately, um, because there are so many public entities involved in the process, it seems to drag on and on. So, uh, the decision was made earlier this month to go with Maxfield, which is, um, proposal, but in your packet. Um, based on that cost, uh, the county EDA feels that they can identify about eight thousand dollars in grant funds, but they will have their staff members, um, go out and solicit. The remainder would then be split amongst, uh, remaining cities. And I had indicated to them that we had five thousand dollars, um, budgeted towards the housing study. Uh, we most likely will not be actually dispersing those funds this year. Um, I asked the county about that, I said, can we just get you a doc? And he said, no, he wants to, to have everything lined up first before he starts collecting money. Um, Dodge Center would put in thirty-five hundred dollars and the remaining four smaller cities would each put in, I think it's about one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars apiece. And that would make up then the twenty-three, six sixty, I believe that's, um, total for Maxfield. So, um, did you have any questions about housing study? Uh, it's a ways off. We'll basically get on Maxfield's calendar, which, uh, the county EDA representative felt would be about eighteen months out. And then the study itself would take about eighteen months. So we're probably three years from actually having a housing study, but, um, we're going down that path.
So we don't have to pay them for three years? Oh, we're budgeted for it. We want to go get, get on board with it, right?
Yeah. Sad that you gotta do a study just to get money.
Exactly. All right, any questions? Concerns, comments? Well, I would, uh, entertain a motion. Either direction. I guess, what are you asking for?
Um, I wanted you to have the information. So like Quay noted, it, it is budgeted, so I don't need permission to spend the funds. But I did wanna keep you kinda up to date to where we were, and it could be next year before the funds are actually dispersed.
Perfect.
Okay.
So there's nothing we have to do, then?
No.
Okay. All right, anything else, Teresa?
No, I don't have anything else.
All right, Brandon?
You're up.
All right.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Council. First on the agenda tonight, uh, engineering report, certificate of acceptance for the South Bend Infrastructure. This may be a little bit new to the council, this is part of our revamped development agreement process with private developments. Uh, so this project here is for the South Bend Commercial Park, that's a commercial park around the, the Quick Trip, uh, in the south end of town. Uh, it's with the city and Joel Bigelow and Sons Enterprises, who is the private developer for this project. Ultimately, again, it was part of the development agreement. During construction, myself and our staff observed construction. When we got close to the end of construction, we did a walkthrough, provided the contractor with a punch list. The contractor completed said punch list. Uh, so we ultimately, myself and Public Works Director, recommend the city council accept this certificate of, of public infrastructure, which in turn will start the warranty period associated with the private developments. So happy to answer any questions you may have. And these will all be kinda coming forward as we finalize the, the subdivisions in town.
So everything is done to?
Yep. How about striping out there? Is, is there, like, for those entrances into Quick Trip?
There is none proposed within the city streets, which are, uh, it's like Eighth and-
Right, but I mean, on the county road.
The, the county didn't require any striping on there, that's something I need to follow back with the county on, on getting some striping done. Uh, it's not really our jurisdiction to dictate what the county required for striping, but I think there's a need out there for some striping. So it's something I'm gonna take up with the county that I don't think would be part of what the city would provide is their certificate of, uh, acceptance of the public infrastructure.
Right.
On the east side, that's a city street, right?
Yes.
How come there's no signage and no- How come there's no signage and no, like, stop signs, street signs, anything?
That was my next question.
Because you don't.
City staff puts up the street signs, so I think that that's on their list of things to put out. I'll circle back.
Because there was no stop sign and I just didn't want people, like now, just pull up.
Coming on to County Route thirteen?
Yeah. And there was nothing there to.
I will circle back with Public Works and we will address that. You get to take care of it.
So at first I wasn't sure if it was a city street, but then I drove along, like, well, it's gotta be, but then there was no.
I just thought with the issue of lights, that maybe striping would help, out on the county road.
Yeah.
I'll circle back with that's kind of that too, see what they want to do.
So we need a motion?
Correct the motion to accept the certificate of acceptance of the public infrastructure.
All right, I entertain a motion to accept the certificate of acceptance for South Bend Infrastructure.
I like that motion.
Got a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. All right, number two, Brandon.
The second item there is a change order for the wastewater treatment plant project. That change order is for three projects. The first one was to repair some condos and junction boxes, junction boxes, excuse me, for the oxidation, some of the equipment out there. There was some settlement from years ago, so there was some exposed wiring, some wiring that had to be repaired. The second item was a water main size to provide for a larger water main for a potential future extension to help city staff with cleaning of the new basin that we put out there. And the third item was some electrical modifications due to some changes that we had to make on the new retention basin mixer. So there's a change order that we have reviewed and recommend the city approve that change order. And the MPCA, who is kind of regulating our construction here, has reviewed this and approved it also. And it'll be rolled into our funding package that we're working with Nancy on to finish up with the MPCA and the PFA.
So are these done already?
Yes.
Well, for free?
What's that?
For free? You know, if we deny it.
Staff and your engineers provided them direction in the field.
Start it. Log is best we got. You know what it is? So we just need a resolution?
I just want a motion to approve the change order.
Okay. Well, if you and Doug will make the motion, approve the change order number two. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Lonnie, thanks. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you. Thanks, Brandon.
Yep. Definitely, we are wrapping this project up for the year, so Manorville is providing their waste to the city of Cassin and we're treating it. And we're up and running. We have some minor restoration, turf restoration, pavement restoration stuff to do moving forward.
Perfect. Good to hear. Thank you.
So I have.
All right, nothing under personnel, and on to attorney.
Teresa, did you want to visit?
Yeah, I can, sure. I can check that out since I've been going to the township meetings. So Mr. Marty had actually gotten ahold of me to come out and look at that Eighth, Third. Eighth Avenue, that's by him, so it's still Eighth Avenue Southeast, but it's on this side, fourteen. To visit with him, he was interested in having the city turn that back over to the township. The township was interested in having it milled before they took it back, which I think was four thousand dollars. To have it milled, so we moved forward with having it milled. I went back to the township. Gee, there wasn't much gravel underneath what was milled. So now the township's requesting that gravel be added before they would accept the road. And so now at this point, that the city will have invested twelve thousand dollars in improving the road. And the township would still want to partner with the city and have the city plow that section. And the township would plow all of the township road. Because now effectively the city owns both sides of the road in front of the property that we annexed on the west side of the township road.
On the west side of town, the one that.
Where a finger, the finger drops. So does the city just want to keep the road and improve it and continue to plow it? Is there any interest in detaching at all at the point where we put all the work into the maintenance? Or is there still an interest in doing a detachment of, I don't know, how many feet, I'm sure?
Well, what's, where was the breakdown? I guess I'm not pointing anything.
Yeah.
Where was the breakdown from milling it and putting it back down to now we want more gravel? I mean, this kind of goes back to.
I think it was no one, no institutional knowledge of what the base was at the time that.
Well, I mean, I'm kind of coming back to the Ron Carlson deal. We had a good faith agreement going here and now we got, I mean, I feel like we're going to take it back. They need to split the milling with us.
So when we proposed that, it's not heavily milling, it's reclaiming where they grind up.
Reclaiming.
Yeah, not only the batuminous pavement, typically the aggregate underneath the roadway. We did that operation. They reclaimed down about a foot. Ended up being a fair amount of sand underneath that road. We weren't expecting sand underneath that road. So that kind of got reclaimed up, excuse me. Got reclaimed up and ended up being a lot more sand than what we were expecting. We typically don't reclaim it up, it ends up being a lot more aggregate, so. That was a little bit of unexpected on my side of things, just not knowing, you know, the history of that road, so.
Yeah, you know, X-ray vision.
Yeah, we didn't go out there and take cores and whatnot, so.
Right.
If the city keeps it, we're going to put the money and we just make it gravel and just.
It's kind of gravel now that the discussion is, is it gravelly gravel or is it more sandy gravel? And is that going to be a problem or not? That's kind of basically.
We're talking in the spring. It's going to be an issue.
Yeah, and then, you know, how long does the sandy, gravelly, batuminous reclaim material hold down when we go to plow it?
No, floor rise. Yes, and that.
Typically reclaiming works.
Well, we're the other figure. We had four grand in it.
It's now because they have to remove all the sand and bring in real gravel.
Or are they just going to cap it with gravel?
I assume cap it.
Well, we would be doing it, so I would be looking into my engineers.
I'm assuming we put gravel on top of it. I can't remember. Was that the right provided, Teresa, the?
I thought it was eight thousand.
Okay.
I thought it was going to be for gravel.
That sounds about right.
We want God to put the asphalt back on.
Well, that was Joe Noldorff. That's kind of why.
Yeah, we want God to do it.
That's where we started, yeah.
He went south?
Well, if you go three inches, that must be what you're figuring.
I can't remember what I figured, to be honest with you. It's been a while. Five hundred feet. Why is it twenty feet out there? Six inches. Yeah, thirty bucks a cubic yard, that's sixty-six hundred and a half foot. It's pretty heavy, but I don't need that much, maybe half that. You know, if we put three inches down, my word, let's get it capped. There's Hanner, I mean, there's Hanner, third, fourth, and fifth, and all those. Yeah, three to six thousand.
And so what I haven't done is asked the city attorney to put any of the paperwork together because it's like, are we going to spend money on the city attorney when we just spent money on the road? That we might just keep the road anyway? Or do we still want to pursue the detachment and turning it over to the township?
If we're going to maintain it, we must keep it. I mean, why would you want to give it to them and then we still got to maintain it?
Well, they're trading the maintain, trade, maintain, maintain for the other road.
Which.
It's not like they're not going to plow in front of that house.
Right, it's only in front of that house.
Well, they might.
They might.
They might.
I can't see them pulling out the blade just because the house is there.
They will.
I can't say they won't, but I don't know.
And right now, I think, you know, it's not that that whole section is on the city limits. And still, we push the snow all the way to the barricade because there's no other reasonable way to handle the snow there. So if you want to move forward with the detachment, let me know. And if you don't, we'll get the road in safe so we can plow it this year.
Mr. Marty wanted to pursue the detachment further. He could petition as well.
Yes.
Or would we have to because we own the road? Perhaps that was the issue.
Yeah, who owns the road would have to petition for detachment, I'd say.
The whole reason we looked at. Trade to it was because of the expense of the road. But if they still want us to go out there and maintain it, what, I mean, what's Charlie's take on it? He didn't, part of the reason we wanted it gone is because they didn't want to go out there, right?
That was the initial discussion on the project, yes.
Let me write it down. It's basically back to gravel, sandy gravel. It can be plowed this winter, as it is. How about if we offered the township, we'll go fifty-fifty on the gravel?
Yeah, I can go to their next meeting and.
And then let them have it back?
And you plow the road. We'll go fifty-fifty on the gravel and you plow the road. It's yours.
Oh, I honestly don't think they would take it.
They don't want to plow. They're trying to give up as much road as they can, I mean.
Well, then why, if that ever gets annexed and out there plowed, then why do we want to have to go back and get the road again?
Yeah, we don't want to go through that again. But if we can get them to cover part of the cost.
That's why I said it'd be easier if we just annex Marty in and we'd have the road in.
Let's save one's house so we don't have to go on.
I don't.
I'm tough.
Tell you the truth, I think we just as well keep it.
Yeah.
Really? It's, we're going to be maintaining it anyway.
If we could put enough rock on it, just, I mean, we can always add more rock next year.
Hold fifteen loads out there in the first half that's bad like that and then blade it down and.
Yeah.
The weather's right forth and send the blade out there to plow it. Don't send the truck out there until the ground's good and froaled.
Yep.
You know, keep it off the ground. Don't go out there and layer ice like we used to do.
I plowed Vernon for quite a few years. I know what it's like.
Especially if it's sandy like that. It's all going to be in the ditch.
Uh-huh.
He's going to be at the place.
Okay, so I'll let Charlie know to get it in shape to plow it and we'll be plowing it.
Yep.
Okay.
They'll put whatever needs, what ten fifteen, what twenty, whatever you need, load, put a nice ground on it.
What's the, what's the cost of that?
Well, I think eighth was the.
I think that might be a little high, but I'm not sure. My footage are out my phone, but.
Okay.
What was the question? Cost of what?
Like, how much?
Doug just said go ahead and dump ten, fifteen loads out there. What was? If we're going to do it.
Hundred bucks a load for the dump trucks. And you hold, Tony, load there, it'd be two thousand dollars.
Yeah, I didn't factor in Charlie holding. I was giving the typical price.
Let them haul it in, they can take the blade out there and put a ground on it.
Well, obviously it'd be cheaper.
Let's do that.
We'll just get by with it. We'll cross everything we need to cross it, you know.
Tell him to haul what he feels he needs just to get it stabilized and fit a swivel.
Yeah, okay.
If we have to, we can improve it more next year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
It'd be nice if we could, someone could get swiky around the roller and blade it. You know anybody over there?
Well, I know the engineer. He knows it. See what you do. Okay. All right, on to number two. We're going to have our, we're going to close the meeting now for a closed session. Attorney-client privilege to discuss a real estate transaction and our subsequent negotiations.
For the shop colo.
For the shop colo.
And this is twenty seventeen street projects.
For those, yeah. We'll talk about the real estate first. And then hit them. Don't do it, don't do it too fast, otherwise there's no break.
So we're going to talk about the real estate first?
Yeah.
The real estate has to be recorded.
Okay.